I am O nine, name is Jean. This is a meeting panel. And that's the meeting panel. Um, great. Other than that, um, can we add agenda?
We'll do approve the agenda as of then.
Okay. Well, I just want to say, I'll pay you the day back.
Aye.
I have a couple of things. Very. I'm a little bit, um, I'm a little bit anxious. I think we're going to have to see that. I think, um, there's an eye?
Aye.
Opposed? There's a comment on agenda items on the meetings act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person and the citizen comment period will be limited to a total of forty-five minutes. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak to anything on the agenda?
It's not exactly on the agenda, but it is something that I'd like to bring at the beginning of the meeting and ask for revision to the agenda, but am I permitted to do that?
Um, we normally don't change the agenda. This is citizen comments for items on the agenda.
Right.
Can you?
Will we hold off until the end?
Yeah, we could put it on the next agenda. Okay, thank you. Are there any citizen comments on any items on the agenda? The consent agenda in front of us will normally be adopted without discussion, wherever the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as amended.
Support.
Motion by Ivy and support by Rhodes. We're going to adopt the items on the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item O nine, one sixty-one, this is the twenty-ten Celtic Festival of the Award of Bid for Tent Rental and Installation. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May sixth, twenty-ten memo from Tom Foley, General Chairman for Celtic Festival. To approve or not approve the award of the bid to American Rentals Incorporated in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents for tent rental and installation for the twenty-ten Celtic Festival as recommended by the Celine Celtic Festival Executive Board. Authorized or not authorized, the mayor clerk to execute the agreement with American Rentals Incorporated after review and approval by the city attorney. You have a motion? Move to approve and authorize?
Second.
Ping, second Ivy, to approve and authorize? Discussion? Mr. Law?
Question, I would assume that this money is in the budget that they are considering at this point, or is this coming out of the general fund and then they reimburse this, or?
Mr. Burgoyne?
Each year, the Celtic Festival has put in a budget that has revenues and expenditures that project to be in balance, and each year, depending on the weather and other factors, they're either in balance or not. But this is from within the allowed budget.
That's fine, thank you.
Is there further discussion on this motion? If not, we have a motion to approve and authorize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, item ten eighty-one, this is a request for waiver of site plan special use fees for outdoor cafe tables. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May fifth, twenty-ten letter from Dan Colander and the May seventh, twenty-ten memo from City Superintendent H. D. Rubel to approve or not approve a reduced fee of three hundred and fifty dollars for the site plan amendment and special land use fees for the proposed outdoor cafe use in the alley behind one oh-three East Michigan Avenue, thus waiving eight hundred dollars in fees.
Move to approve.
Second. Move Rhodes, second Ping, to approve. Discussion? Mr. Rhodes?
I just had a question. Who owns the alley that the outdoor cafe use is going to be in? Proposed to be?
Mr. Colander.
Okay.
Mr. Ivy?
Let's let Mr. Rubel precede me, and then I'll ask my comment.
Well, I think he got him to answer.
Yeah, it was, excuse me.
Did you want to respond?
Mr. Richard Colander is here. He's the one who brought in the memo on behalf of his son, Dan Colander. So, Mr. Colander is here, in case you have a question about the property, and their family owns most of that alleyway up to the end of their property at one oh-three, the east poundy line, and that's the property in question that is proposed to have the cafe tables, the outdoor cafe tables.
Will the layout be such that there'll be an access way through that alley?
Yes, yes, there's a plan. It'll be placed before the planning commission on May twenty-sixth for both site plan and special land use, and then it'll come back to the council on June seventh for two more actions.
Thank you.
Mr. Ivy?
Okay, I understand, then. There's going to be a presentation before the planning commission on May twenty-sixth, and it will come back to the council on June second as to the final approval of this. So basically, we're looking at the waiving of fees this evening. But I did have some concerns about the access in the alley, and there has, in the past, been some concerns about the right-of-way and the ability to get deliveries to the rear of other businesses that exist there nearby. And I just want to be sure that as we go into the process with the approval for the planning commission, that there's ample access, and furthermore, that Mr. Colander is on board with keeping the area clean, free of debris, and accessible for any deliveries.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this motion? Thank you, Mr. Rubel. All in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten eighty-two, this is the twenty-ten Summer Fest. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April nineteenth, twenty-ten memo from Art Trapp, an application for community event use of public ways for the twenty-ten Celine Summer Fest. Acknowledge receipt of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-ten memo from Public Works Director Fordice, April twenty-sixth, twenty-ten memo from Police Chief Button, and April twenty-ninth, twenty-ten email from Fire Chief Hatt. To approve or not approve the twenty-ten Celine Summer Fest event to be held on August sixth and seventh, twenty-ten downtown utilizing city parking lots number one and number four, with relocation of the farmer's market to parking lot number two on August seventh, as well as closing Southian Arbor Street from Michigan to Henry, closing Northian Arbor Street from Michigan to McKay, closing Hall Street, and closing East McKay from Northian Arbor to Hall Street. To approve or not approve of the beer and wine to be located in parking lot number four, and to authorize or not authorize the use of city sidewalks for the five-k walk run on August seventh, the set approvals for this event subject to the following: one, that the traffic engineer issued a required temporary traffic control orders for the street closings; two, that the required permit to close the left turn lanes on US twelve at Ann Arbor Street be obtained from MDOT; three, that the license for the beer/wine tent and liquor liability insurance for this portion of the event be obtained by the Celine Picnic in the Park as in previous years; and four, that the cost for this community event estimated at three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars above normal operating cost be waived. Move to approve, approve, and authorize?
Second.
The motion by Ping and second by Morrow, to approve, approve, and authorize. Do we have any discussion on this motion? Okay, Mr. Trapp, you want to talk about it a little bit?
Always. As indicated in the memo, it's August sixth and seventh. We have a group of about twenty volunteers who are helping to put this all together. It's going to be very similar to last year, although we do have a few new events and activities, and we're really looking forward to having some really good weather, which I don't know if you can approve that here, but that would be nice. And other than that, I think things are going well. Our next meeting is Thursday, so, but things are moving along. We don't have all the bands wrapped up yet. We're still trying to get fifty amp fuse, and a lot of it will depend on whether they get a better offer than ours, so we don't pay them as much as some of the others that they have encountered. Last year, they got five thousand for the night. We don't pay anywhere close to that, so.
Any questions for Mr. Trapp? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am mayor. Maybe mention the new volunteer recognition?
Oh, yes. I was supposed to do that, and I forgot. We're going to recognize the city volunteers at Saturday. Throughout the day, the firemen will be doing their chicken roast, and all the volunteers that we send out a little slip to or a little letter to will receive a coupon for a hot dog and a soft drink, and that'll be done through the firemen. They'll be able to redeem their ticket at the fireman's trailer and then pick up a soft drink at the beer and wine tent, so.
I was at a Girl Scout Awards thing yesterday at Eastern for the region, and one of the gold awardees did this project that I think would be really beneficial, which she had a volunteer tent kind of thing in conjunction with an event in their community, and all the organizations that need volunteers had an opportunity to either staff that tent or provide materials. And I was thinking that Summer Fest might be an ideal opportunity for something like that, so would I talk to you about that?
Yeah.
Your meeting on Thursday?
Pardon?
Your meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve, approve, and authorize, and no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten eighty-three, this is the twenty-ten Sports Cars to Celine Community Event. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April twenty-sixth, twenty-ten letter from Kerry Silo Koenig, Celine Downtown Merchants Association, and the application for community event use of public ways. Acknowledge receipt of the May seventh, twenty-ten memo from Police Chief Button and the May tenth, twenty-ten memo from Public Works Director Fordice to approve or not approve the Sports Cars to Celine event to be held on Saturday, June twentieth, twenty-ten with the closing of Southian Arbor Street from Michigan Avenue to Henry and Northian Arbor from Michigan Avenue to McKay, along with the closing and use of parking lots number one and number four, subject to the following conditions: one, that a certificate of insurance be provided by the Downtown Merchants Association, naming the city of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party for this event, subject to approval by the city attorney; two, that the required permit to close the left turn lanes on US twelve at Ann Arbor Street be obtained from MDOT; three, that the traffic engineer issued a required temporary traffic control orders for this event; further, that the city fees estimating the amount of one hundred and sixty-two dollars over and above the normal operating cost for public works and police services be waived.
Move to approve. Support?
Ivy, second Rhodes, to approve. Discussion? Mr. Olson, would you like to come up and talk about this event?
On June twentieth, correct? Yes.
Does that Father's Day?
Yes, it is.
We did the event last year on Father's Day, and it seemed to work really well, get families out and things. You know, we're planning to do mostly what we've done before. We have partnered this year with the Huron Valley Corvette Club, which will allow us to hopefully get to a wider array of sports car drivers and get them in here, and we just hope to have a good, fun day for everybody.
Any questions for Mr. Olson?
A question about the attendance, John. Have you seen an increase over the years, or has it sort of?
This one in particular is incredibly reliant on the weather. When we've had sunny days, we've had as many as a hundred and thirty cars there. When we had a threat of hail a couple of years ago, we had about thirty cars there, so, you know, it's gone up and down. On the good years, it is increasing, but you do have those bad years, and if it looks like bad weather, they do not bring those cars out.
Okay, the cars, that's one, but the attendance in general for the public?
The attendance of the people, yeah. The attendance of the people has gone up. We're seeing more families, you know, it's been going up.
Another question, maybe I missed it last year or the year before, but have you thought of putting some sort of music in connection with it?
We've talked about that this year, yeah.
And I?
Yeah, we've been adding that to a number of our events. This is one we hadn't yet, but we're hoping to this year if we can get it all to work out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
I'd just like to say that I think it's a great event, and I've always enjoyed walking around, looking at the various cars, and since it's on Father's Day, I've been trying to drop hints to my wife that I should have one of those, but it's not been successful yet. Anyway, it's a good event, and thanks for bringing it to town.
Any other questions for Mr. Olson? Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten eighty-four, this is the midweek farmer's market. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May twelfth, twenty-ten memo for C. Andrew Campbell to approve or not approve the midweek farmer's market to be located at the Celine District Library on Tuesday from four p.m. to eight p.m. from June first through August thirty-first. To authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute a landlord/tenant agreement with the Celine District Library for the use of their parking lot for the farmer's market after review and approval by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and authorize. Second.
Rhodes, second Ivy? Discussion? Ms. Ping?
Um, are we, hm, usually we get a copy of the lease agreement if we're going to approve a landlord/tenant agreement, so I'm, two weeks ago, when this came before us, there was the breakdown of costs, and it looked like it was going to be break even, maybe make a couple hundred dollars, like, when it's downtown. So my question is, is that still the intent, or now that it's a landlord/tenant agreement, is there costs associated with it?
Mr. Campbell, could you answer that?
Yeah, thank you, and certainly you're correct. Usually we provide the proposed language. I have had the city attorney look at it, but it doesn't go before the library board until tomorrow, and we're trying to make it work out, hopefully start it prior to the next meeting, if possible, the next city council meeting. There, I believe it's one dollar a year, and as far as liability insurance, our liability carrier said that it will not increase the cost. As a matter of fact, we sent that off, that language today, because they have to review it and approve it as well. So everything appears to be moving forward, but that is, as you said, also the intent, and with the current commitment of vendors, it will more than break even of the costs already.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes, I wanted to address the concerns of several council members during our last meeting who thought, well, maybe this will detract from the attendance on our Saturday farmer's market, and also confuse the people that there's two different locations for the farmer's market. I spoke to officials from the Village of Dexter last week regarding their farmer's market, and you may not be familiar with that market, but it has been operating with two days of market for five years. They've had their market on Tuesday evening as well as on Saturday morning. And I asked the official, well, has, since you started on Tuesday evening, has there been any decrease in the attendance on Saturday? And she responded, well, no. In fact, there's quite a different crowd that attends on Tuesday, and it seems that the only obstacle that they've had in getting this to be successful was having vendors that would commit to both Saturday and Tuesday. Well, in this case, we're assured by both Nancy Crisp and Leslie Meathammer that there are plenty of vendors who are committed to both of those days, and I support this. I think it's an excellent idea. And when I asked the official from the Village of Dexter, well, what do you think about this detracting from our potential for increasing business downtown? Is it going to hurt our downtown business? She said, well, I should think that your first concern, it doesn't matter whether they're coming downtown, if you can have any event or any attraction that will bring people to Celine, that's a positive thing. And I agree, that is a positive thing, and it's only a couple of blocks to get downtown, and people that come into the farmer's market may well want to explore the rest of the city. So I support this a hundred percent. I think it's a very good idea. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve and authorize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten eighty-five, overban crack ceiling major in local streets. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May tenth, twenty-ten memo from Public Works Director Fordice to award or not award the overban crack ceiling projects to Skodeller Construction in the amount of twenty-four thousand, twenty cents as recommended by Public Works Director Fordice, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute a contract if necessary with Skodeller Construction after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to award and authorize.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Rhodes, second Ping, to award and authorize. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten eighty-six, pavement marking and award of contract. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May tenth, twenty-ten memo from Public Works Director Fordice to award or not award the long-line pavement marking contract to Michigan Payment Marking LLC in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents, and to award or not award the handwork pavement marking contract to RS Contracting in the estimated amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents as recommended by Public Works Director Fordice, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute a contract if necessary in Michigan Payment Marketing LLC after review and approval by the city attorney. And RS Contracting.
Move to award, award, and authorize. Support?
With that amendment, to add the RS Contracting also?
Right.
Mr. Ivy, move that, and Mr. Rhodes, the second part? Thank you. Ms. Ping?
I just had a question. Are either of these two firms, the people who did the marking, like, on Owen Street and then Bennett, the only reason I ask is that they used, like, an iron-on? I don't know, I know it's not iron-on, but it wasn't real paint, and it's gone now, like, all the markings are gone, and I'm not exactly sure if they weren't put on properly or what, but, you know, you can see where they've, like, you have a long line, and then it gets folded up, and then some weather happens, and then pretty soon, the striping's gone.
All right. These are not the same firms, and we, with this particular contract, we won't be using those types of markings. Those generally are good, a good kind of marking for fresh asphalt situations like we had there. The Owen Place ones, that asphalt was a few months old by the time the marking went down. I think that was part of the problem with that one. But no, we're not using that type of application in this contract for that contractor.
Okay, great. Any other questions? I would like to point out that you did do this in conjunction with Washtenaw County in order to get lower bids, and I think that, you know, in an effort to continually to monitor our costs, I know some of these items we've done in-house before, and we've had DPW bid on some of this, so I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you want, especially since you're a new DPW director, to talk a little bit about the process, so it's a little bit different this season than in the past. I know, this is sort of putting you on the spot, but.
That's right. I'd love to take credit for the idea, but it was actually George Danifell who started the process with the county, and he actually did most of the work, putting the scope of work together for this. I took it through the final easy stages of it, and we'll take it through construction. But, yeah, we did, we bid with Washtenaw County Road Commission, and, you know, our long-line bid is about eighty thousand linear feet, and the county's long-line bid is somewhere around three or four million linear feet, so we did get a bulk purchase kind of discount there. Somewhat ironically, the bids this year are actually higher than what we got last year, but what we got last year turned out to not be very satisfactory either, so these are MDOT pre-qualified firms and have gone through the county's qualification process, so we've got very good bids and significant savings in administrative time. You know, I didn't have to do any of the contracting work. The county took care of that for us. We just had to put the scope together and come here tonight.
So they're not talking about billing us for any administrative services yet?
That's correct. We actually, we covered that upfront.
Okay. Sure that'll come back around later at some point.
Maybe.
I have one more question. Ms. Ping? Do you know, are either of these firms local, or are they Michigan-based companies?
They are both Michigan-based, but I don't recall their actual locations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to award, award, and authorize. Is there further discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten eighty-seven, tennis court repair at Curtis and Peoples Park. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May eleventh, twenty-ten memo from Public Works Director Fordice to award or not award a contract to tennis courts unlimited in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for repair of the tennis courts at Curtis and Peoples Park. To authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute a contract if necessary with tennis courts unlimited for these repairs after review and approval by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to award and authorize.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Morrow?
I have a couple of quick questions for Mr. Fordice. Mr. Fordice, I'm referring to your memorandum of May eleventh, two thousand and ten. Tennis Courts Unlimited did the repair work at Curtis and People in oh-four, and just so I'm clear, those cracks that they repaired are not the current cracks we're looking to deal with today in two thousand and ten. New cracks have appeared. That's correct?
Partially correct. There are new cracks, and this will address the new cracks. Some of the old crack repair has failed. However, the work was done in two thousand and four, and the crack repair system was never, nobody ever claimed it would last six years. It's a system that we, the one we used in two thousand and four, is a, it's a quality system, but it's not a real full-blown repair of the cracks. It kind of covers them up, makes them look nice, and makes it playable, and.
And we're doing that same thing again in two thousand and ten?
It's a similar system. It's not the exact same system. This is a somewhat improved product from that, but similar basic idea of stretching a piece, adhering a piece of fabric over the crack, filling underneath it, and then that moves with the pavement to keep it covered up.
And in your professional opinion, what's your prognostication as to how long this crack repair system will last?
Well, the previous one, while they didn't even really, they didn't offer a warranty. This one has a two-year guarantee, so the non-warranted one, we got about four good years and two so-so years out of, so this two-year one, I expect that we'll get probably eight playable years out of it.
Okay. And then my final question, you might not be able to answer this, but the two bids we received from Tennis Courts Unlimited and then Goodard Coatings Curtis, why the disparity in prices? I mean, the outfit we're not going with is essentially double what Tennis Courts Unlimited is.
I had some conversations with both firms that submitted bids on the scope of work, and I, I think essentially that Goddard was not willing to submit as little a scope of work as I wanted. They wanted to do a much more of a refurbishment type than a quick repair type.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Fordice, could you remind me what it was that we did at Teft Park with those tennis courts and what the approximate cost was?
Teft was, that system was called Nova Pro Bounce, and we essentially put a whole new layer, a whole new playing surface over the existing asphalt there, and that system was about thirty thousand per court. So we spent a little over a hundred and twenty thousand to do those four courts there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Law?
Mr. Fordice, you mentioned in your memo concerning that previous repairs have failed. I don't know if you could explain why they failed and what you did or what the department did to fix these new cracks before doing this, before going this route?
There's really not much to do in terms of repairing the repairs. There, it's an adhesive product that stretches that fabric over the cracks, and over a period of years, it loses its adhesion, so some of it has peeled up and away from those cracks. So that, those materials that have failed, and failed is perhaps the wrong word, those repairs have exceeded their useful life, might be a better euphemism for it, because again, they, those, that type of repair is just not expected. again, they, those, that type of repair is just not expected to last for six years and spends, more than half of it has lasted longer than six years, so we're doing pretty well. There isn't really maintenance to be done on these, on this type of repair, other than just keeping the court clean. It's, it's a, it's not a small amount of money, but it's significantly less than the Nova Pro Bounce system or, or reconstruction.
If I, if I may, Mayor, that while you mentioned that, Mr. Fordice, and picking up from what Mr. Rhodes had asked concerning the Teft Park, now I understand probably the Curtis and the People's Park tennis courts don't get as much use as Teft Park.
Correct.
However, the money that the city is putting in this year, presuming this will pass and in 2004, well, it does get its value, I guess, in the long run. I can't help thinking that maybe down the road, maybe after this round, we should consider just doing what we did at Teft with these tennis courts and at least get a maximum value out of the money and have them last a lot longer. Or if you can comment on that?
That is a consideration. The, the system that we put in at Teft is not maintenance-free. That will require, I have to do a quick estimate, but I'd say about every, every five years we have to do a new surface treatment on that court to maintain the, the system and the warranty there. And that coating is probably going to be in the ballpark of $8,000 for the four courts at Teft, so it's, yeah, the payoff there would be, you'd have greatly improved playability, but whether it would be worth that initial investment for what are basically recreational courts.
One more question I could about the warranty. You mentioned this is a two-year warranty.
Yes.
I guess there was no other company, granted that this is a good, I guess, considering what we're dealing with, a good bid price, but there was not a longer warranty that was out there that could be nailed down?
No, actually, for this type of repair, that's a pretty long warranty.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ivey.
Mr. Fordice, I understand that the expenditure for the repair of the People's Park and the, what are we talking about here? What's the other?
Curtis.
Curtis, thank you. It's an NITIFA budget and we've already decided that that money's going to get spent. But I just want to be assured for the record that we are not going to forget about the completion of the job at Brecken Park where we have begun to remove the tennis courts that were there, but yet as I walk by there today, I still see an eyesore where there's standing water and the sawhorses that were there to block people from going in have been knocked over. Please help us out here. Are we on track with getting that resolved or what is the status of the Brecken Park tennis courts?
That project is still, still going forward. It is in a bit of a lag phase. That's a project that basically fell victim to the change of directors at the DPW, so it's just a project that, the next phase, getting the soil erosion permit is going to require a fair amount of my time to put that permit application together and get the permit so we can move to the next phase of the project and just to date in getting into this new position and trying to keep the majority of things moving forward, that one has sat still.
Might I ask if you could project into the future as to when that might be completed?
That will, depending on the approval of the permit, which I don't expect any challenges with that, you know, within the next three to four weeks.
That would be great. A number of citizens have approached me about this and I wanted to be sure that, that we had an answer for them. I appreciate you sharing that.
Any further discussion on this motion? Thank you, Mr. Fordice. All in favor of the motion to award and authorize, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1088, purchase or replacement standby pump. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 15th, 2010 memo from PCF Superintendent Skoll to authorize or not authorize a purchase or replacement Gorman Rough Pump Model JS8E60-X2 at the cost of $18,561 from Dubois Cooper, the sole source provider for Southeast Michigan for the South Side List Station at 8865 Sunny Island Road.
Move to authorize.
Support.
Morrow, second. Rhodes to authorize. Mr. Skoll.
Like the memo suggested, this is for a replacement pump for the South Side List Station, which was installed in 2004. The pump failed last April, well, April 14th and was pulled for repairs and at that time I figured there's probably time that we have one on backup, considering that the station is, supports the east side of the city sewer vein. Unfortunately, Dubois Cooper is the only source for the pump, so there was no bidding process.
Any questions for Mr. Skoll? Mr. Morrow?
Mr. Skoll, you said the last piece of equipment was purchased in '04. Is that a normal lifespan for equipment of this magnitude?
I was hoping it would be longer.
Okay.
Normally, four years of the list station is, is about all you can expect.
Okay.
But with the sheer size and expense, I was hoping it would last longer and I wasn't expecting a lead time of so long.
Okay.
That was the biggest shock.
Okay. And so the same would be true then of this, this new pump that will also last anywhere from five to 10 years?
Yeah, hopefully. We're not sure why the last one failed. There was no indication within the pump of any obstructions, so I, I don't really know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Skoll. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. La.
Was this pump, Mr. Skoll, the one that was being replaced, was this from the same company that we're getting the new one from?
Yes, the repair work is being done by a local company.
Okay, but the pump that failed is the same one that's being replaced with the new one?
Correct. Due to the configuration of the list station, the rails, you're really limited in what you can replace it with. It has to be able to fit down the same set of rails and fit on the same boot at the bottom.
I understand the city's pretty much got its hands tied maybe on this one.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, because I hate when you say that you don't know why this one failed, tells me that this company isn't really reliable and it's, now, I could be wrong. I don't know with its, its merchandise or its equipment.
Well, we have three other stations provided by the same manufacturer and they've all, they provide support and they've been fairly reliable. This is by far the largest though, unfortunately the most expensive.
Are they going to, I hope, hopefully, they're going to tell you and the city why it failed in the first place?
I hope to hear from the people doing the repair work. Again, it's a separate company doing the repair work.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Do we have a motion on the floor to authorize just of the replacement pump? Thank you, Mr. Skoll. All in favor of authorize, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1089, the Willis Road Construction Project, MDOT Contract Number 10-5326. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 13th, 2010 memo from City Superintendent Kieruul to approve or not approve MDOT Contract Number 10-5326, Control Section STU 81075, Job Number 108414, between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the City of Sleen for the MDOT administration of the Willis Road Project, which would be South End Arbor Street to Art Hill Drive, with an estimated project cost of $709,900 for federal funding amount estimated at $369,000 and the city's estimated participation amount of $340,900. To authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute MDOT Contract Number 10-5326 after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
A second.
Second, Ivey to approve and authorize. Mr. Rubel, you want to come talk about that, this project? Planning for this for a long time.
Yes, yes. Yes, we, we began working directly with MDOT last December when we first submitted the application package and all the, we've accomplished all the, the elements of the, of where we are today, the, the plan phase, the permit phase and the bid phase are all in the FY10 budget and we've accomplished all those. The bid date set by MDOT is June 4th. This agreement culminates all the activity we've had with MDOT for going through the design phase and turning it now into the construction phase. And before they will release any money to the city or allow the project to even be awarded, we must sign the city-state agreement as we've done with all past federally projects last year with the ARA project. MDOT administers the projects, they award the contract, they make all the payments to the contractor and all we do is, we do the field work and we feed the information to the consultant engineer, which in this case is Spicer Group, and then they in turn fill out all the MDOT forms electronically that goes to land and can be processed. And so the city staff will be involved with the onsite work and then we'll feed the information to the Spicer Group and then they'll crank it out through the, the MDOT process for us.
Are there questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. La.
Mr. Rubel, the federal funding 369,000, is that stimulus funds, I take it?
Those are our standard STP funds, street, surface transportation program.
So that's not part of the American recovery?
No.
Okay. Because I would, that would have probably been specified in this, that's, is that right?
Yes, this is straight federal aid funds that we get every four years.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
We won't be able to get it next year if we don't address our transportation funding issue. Just wanted to point that out, because anybody didn't hear me say that before. Are there other questions? Mr. Rhodes, do you have a question?
Not a question, but more of a comment and mostly in the way of thanks to city engineer and others for bringing this project around to fruition and I'm excited that it includes not only improved pavement and drainage, but also bike lanes and parking, better access to the parks. It's going to be a tremendous improvement to that section of it and when it's done, I think we'll have one of our community walks down that road.
Yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. La.
Just follow another question if I could about the staging area. I assume that's going to be at the, right across from where the old Baptist church was, right?
Yes.
And obviously, when work was done in that area before, there was a lot of dust and residents were concerned about it, so I hope as then it was addressed, that little steps will be taken to alert the residents that...
Right. For this project, there's a screen fence six foot high being placed around the staging areas, part of the project and part of the project cost. So it'll be screened, have some visible screening as well as it'll keep the debris, you know, it'll actually probably stop most of the wind from causing any, any real big problem there. So we've addressed that with the screen fencing.
The screening will not impact, the chief's not here to talk about, about traffic or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Further discussion?
I also wanted to support what Mr. Rhodes said about offering more non-motorized options for the benefit and health of our community. I did have questions about the crosswalk and ramp at Rosemont and Old Creek and are those static and are, is it going to be signed or, and what kind of crosswalk are you going to be putting on the road? What is this going to look like?
It's, it's a standard crosswalk as you see it, any of the crossings in town, like the new ones on Henry Street, or no, it's Harris Street, Harrison Henry for instance, you know, the, that type of crosswalk. It's the kind that's specified for a major street and it's ADA compliant and proper dimensions, proper slopes and there's a street light right there too. I mean, there's an overhead street light.
Okay.
At that location.
Okay, thank you. Turning in further discussion on this motion? Thank you, Mr. Rubel. We have a motion on the floor to approve and authorize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under discussion, we have commissioned committee reports from council members. Mr. Rhodes?
I have just one announcement. The last youth council meeting of this school year will occur tomorrow evening at 5:30. Been an active group this year as always and they're, they're looking forward, I think, to their summer vacation and they're kind of closing out their, their year by continuing to advocate for the teen center. And last I heard, there were about 400 responses to the survey primarily in favor of, that survey will be tabulated and presented at some later date.
Other commissioner committee reports?
The Arts and Culture Commerce, Culture Committee met last week and they're moving forward with looking for, a month ago, we had proposals from two artists that responded to the RFP. One is an artist out of Chelsea and the other artist is also from the county. And they met with both of them to try to decide, they actually went and visited their studios to find out how viable their, their studios would be to actually make something that would accommodate our outdoor seating. And what they ended up doing was bringing both of these artists together and they're going to do a, a mixture of their two different mediums. One works with tiles and the other works with scrap metals. So they're going to, I know, it sounds kind of funny, but actually the, what they kind of proposed sounds good. So now the committee's at a point where they're actually going to ask them to do a small mock-up of what they would be proposing for the outdoor seating for outside. So hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll be able to see kind of what they come together to collaborate with for our outdoor seating. The Environmental Commission, the city staff survey that was conducted several months ago has been compiled and a very nice report has been generated from that, so you should expect that in the next couple of weeks with recommendations from the Environmental Commission on how to, that we might be more efficient around the city and, and some of the practices that we have here. And then as far as the senior center goes, last senior center meeting was, we went mainly over the budget and at this point, the budget's pretty close to the same as it was last year. There are no staff salary increases, there will be no COLA increases, they follow what community ed does and then the small increase comes from the benefit costs, because those went up significantly this year, so that's it.
Other commissioner committee reports? Do we have any reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Back again. The next community walk is on Saturday, May 29th. It will start at nine o'clock in the morning, South End Arbor Street, outside of Farmer's Market Downtown location. And if the weather permits, if it hasn't rained too much prior to that, the intent is to go down to Curtis Park and do the Max Adler Trail through that, through the backside of Curtis Park. It's fairly low in some areas and so in spite of the good work done by DPW over the last year or so, if we think it's too damp, then I believe what we'll do is do a walk more in town and we'll incorporate Henny Field into that walk because Henny Field will be open to the public next week and it's got some great paths on it.
You should consider walking the 24-hour really too, that's that day, so join with the kids. Any other announcements? Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would first like to recognize and thank all the volunteers who showed up on a blustery morning, a week ago, Saturday, May 8th, at Teft Park to participate in the annual Parks Commission cleanup at Teft Park. There were about 20 who participated and I think we accomplished a great deal in, in the three or four hours that, that we were there. Secondly, I would like to also recognize and thank both the city council and the city staff for what appears to be a success story at Canterbury Park in, in terms of the drainage problems that you're all aware of that we had last year. Having personally inspected Canterbury on Friday after our three or four day monsoon that we had last week, there was no evidence of any dampness or any... no evidence of any dampness, or any puddles, or anything that would interfere with enjoyment of the park. I spoke to a couple of residents who live near the park, and they were very satisfied. So thank you. And a special thank you to Mr. Fordyce, who headed up the work there that made that possible. Thank you.
We have any other announcements or reports on your public comment under the Open Meetings Act? Any citizens may come forward at this time, make common requests to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Paul Gorga. I am a resident of the City of Saline. I was hoping that at some point this evening, we'd have an opportunity to have a discussion on an issue that I think is very near and dear to us all and very concerning to many people. And it seems to be getting elevated in concern in the city. The Marketplace and Lofts project on West Main Street continues to wallow in zero activity, and the lot as it exists today is in a terribly unsightly and potentially unsafe condition. As we enter the spring and summer months, where the City of Saline is at its finest with image of color, flowers, and spirited community activities, the inactive project is a terrible black eye on the beauty that Saline offers. I'd like to ask council and staff to advise and update our community on the current status of the developer and the development, outstanding and delinquent obligations, the action plan, either his, or the city's, or both, and the timeline to either immediately require the developer to recommence construction, or to remediate the site to one that addresses the water pooling, provides for a safe grading of the site, elimination of the need for fencing, eliminate the remaining residual materials from demolition, and those materials being stored for construction, and to provide a finished grassed surface. Our community has been very patient throughout these challenging times, and with our economy continuing to be unstable for some time to come, and with the challenges that our local retail shops have with this economy, I would ask the council and staff to take an aggressive leadership role in resolving this unacceptable condition on the western gateway to our retail district. And I'd like to ask for comment, or if you have anything you can share at this point, we'd like to know.
Mr. Ford, we spoke about it at the last council meeting. We did send a letter, the planning department sent a letter to the developer requesting a remediation plan. And I don't know if Mr. Campbell or Mr. Ruble would like to speak to that. We asked for that plan and to be implemented by July 1st. Is that correct? So I don't know if we've gotten a response back from them. I don't know, Mr. Campbell, if you, but we did speak about it two weeks ago.
Okay.
So I don't know if you guys have anything more. There is a process that the city has to go through in order to initiate any additional actions. And basically, we're taking the steps, and this is the first step.
Okay.
Thank you for your concern. We're all very concerned about it, and we would love to be able to solve the problem as much as you would.
Yeah. Interestingly enough, in the last two or three days, I've had four or five neighbors and people around town.
Yeah.
All at once, it's sort of bubbled up, and I guess they think I like to come to council meetings.
Yeah. We did talk about it, actually, at the last council meeting under discussion. So that's why we didn't talk about it at this meeting, which was that we did send a letter request, and we asked the plan to be implemented.
That he has a plan submitted by July 1?
We made a list of requests that...
What leverage does the city have? If he's delinquent, can we start foreclosure proceedings?
Very little. It's private property. It's only health and welfare. It's not, you know, it's eyesore, that's not health and welfare.
What about the water pooling? Isn't that health? How about, you know, if somebody goes through about fencing?
As long as it's barricaded, safe.
Love to get rid of the barricade. That's your western gateway. Thank you, council and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you. I'm Neel Ottapal Bhattacharya, in Shored Neel. I live at 2840 Wildwood Trail. I thank you for the good work. I wanted to come with a proposal about the taxes assessment when the notices go out, and how much time is given to the citizen for appeal process. What I've seen, that it comes around first week of March, this time was March 3rd, and by that time, you try to gather all the papers in two weeks' time, it's not enough for a, I mean, a working citizen to prepare and come forward with a justified argument and go through the hearing process. And by the time you prepare the paper, you're out of time. The date has passed, and you have to wait for the next year. Having my experiences with the appeal board, I have heard comments from the appeal board members that their hands are tied. That was two years back. Since then, I've started doing some homework and asking Saline citizens of different age groups, different backgrounds, different socioeconomic status, everything. All of them said in agreement is that a four-weeks' time interval for appeal process would be a good time for them to prepare an appeal process and be heard of. So this is the proposal in short. What kind of four weeks, when it starts, when it ends, I really don't care. All I understand is that you give the citizen four weeks' time. Now, this will make a good time for a senior citizen, a working citizen, where both the parents are working, to give enough time to prepare an appeal process and come to the appeal board for a justified argument why their taxes should be lowered or made higher, or whatever, kept same. Now, my suggestion and proposal is this. The notice of the new assessment should not go out no later than February 15th. And the hearing should not start no earlier than March 15th. So in between that February 15th and March 15th, the citizens get two, four weeks of time to prepare for their appeal draft or document, and gather the evidences they want to collect to justify their argument in front of the board. And I don't really understand why there is such a limited time, and a lot of people have struggled with this, not just me. I have talked to a lot of people, and some of them people, some of the, I'm sorry, I'm out of time, but...
It's okay.
To cut it short, is I have talked to a lot of people, and a lot of say, oh, if you need to go for a signature drive, call me, call me. I don't want to look for a signature drive. That's a lot of time and effort. But if good discussion prevail and good minds think alike, I think this is feasible from the clerical standpoint or the paper management standpoint. And hopefully, it will make it comfortable for the citizen and give them a comfortable time period to appeal. Thank you. That's all.
Sir, I think we should probably do an article in our FYI, possibly, on the subject in the future. A lot of our hands are tied in local government. A lot of this is decided by the state. But I do think that there probably needs to be some clarification to our citizens on what the situation is and why we have the kind of constraints that we have. So possibly, we could do something on the website for now, and then make sure in, I know that the assessor's office makes every effort to try to explain the process and, you know, the realities of the situation. So if this question could be addressed in that, certainly immediately on the website, but then possibly next year. But it is due to state requirements. So, and so I would suggest you speak with your state representative. Ms. Ping?
The other thing that we might be able to do is have on the website or included in the article is the steps necessary to go through the appeal, so that maybe any supporting documents that are needed ahead of time, recent sales or whatever, in the neighborhoods, that they can have those, they can have the time to get those documents ready, so that when they actually do get their notice, they can go through and see what's relevant and what isn't, and decide then if they would like to move forward with the appeal. But if we let them know ahead of time all the things that they will need, so that they can start gathering those documents, that might be helpful, too.
Mayor?
Mr. La.
Perhaps if there is the wish or desire by council or by enough citizens in the city that this should be changed, not only should they contact their state representative, but maybe we, as a council or as a city, should contact the MML and see what they can do to lobby their, to lobby Lansing to make the changes, if that's where it's coming from, where these restrictions are, whatever you want to call them, guidelines. Or is that something that's not of their realm? I'm just saying, the more voices, or the larger voices, or the more voices, the better that change could get in place if there's a desire for it.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, if that's what the council as a group wanted to do, we could look into that, and we could discuss with the municipal league, as well as our own legislators, about that. Absolutely.
Why don't we start with the league and see if that maybe even brought up?
We can do that.
Let us know.
Yep, we can do that.
Thanks.
Is there any other issues and comments? If not, we, city council, we need a motion to convene a closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of real estate. The city council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session.
So move.
Second. Move, Rhodes, second, Ping. We need a roll call.
Councilmember Marrow?
Yes.
Excuse me. Councilmember Ivy?
Yes.
Councilmember Little is absent. Councilmember Ping?
Yes.
Councilmember La?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Driscoll?
Yes.
We need a closed session at 8:33. Okay, well, reconvene to regular session at 9:10. And is there any other business to come before the city council?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Campbell?
Sorry, just real brief, just want to, I just mentioned this to Councilmember Ivy, just so you all know, it was a timely question, or comments that, I should say, comments, not questions, that Councilmember Ivy mentioned about the Canterbury stormwater soil drainage system. Should be by the, sometime between now and the end of the week, we'll be submitting, staff will be submitting a report per your request, when we, when council approved this design and whatnot last year. You also have requested, directed staff to give you a report of how effective it has been. So that will be, I actually received a draft of it today, and so hopefully, by the end of this week, it'll be to you all.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Campbell, does that report include staff communicating with the residents who had some particular and rather large problems with water?
I believe so. I've just seen some pictures. I haven't seen the actual narrative yet, so I don't want to say for sure.
If that's too much of a burden, I know, I would personally appreciate that.
Okay.
And find that valuable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other business to come before the city council?
I just wanted to real quickly bring up the Memorial Day Parade. I'm assuming we're all participating in that. Is that correct?
Okay.
And the banner is...
And you get to carry the banner.
I was going to volunteer you, but, and the Saline PD?
Correct.
Our next meeting's June 7th at 7:30. We have a motion to adjourn at 9:12.